As if we're gonna get started. I call this meeting a policy committee together on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. When I'm looking for motion to improve the minutes from July first, twenty twenty-two, is everyone seeing those? Is there emotions? Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there a second? Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Any discussion? Hearing none is called a roll.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. D?
Oh, yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bogman?
Yes.
And Mr. Zink?
Mr. Zink? On the list on the agenda, do we need to call the hall?
We do need to call the hall.
Would you consider so?
Yes. Mr. D?
Yes.
Yes, Bodie?
Here.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here.
Ms. Shafer?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Bogman?
Here.
And Mr. Zink here.
Thank you. Mr. Bogman, would you please take us through policies to just master?
I gave you all packet there. Your very top page is your policy agenda for today. So I'll kind of walk you through as we work all the way down our stack. I got everything in order for you. So if we get, if we get lost along the way, we'll just pause and go back. We'll make sure everybody's following. So have the agenda there. The next page is kind of a, I took a snapshot at what we're going to talk about today with these nineteen policies. So that you can kind of see where the revision came from and why. And give you an idea of what was changed. They don't have to read through the entire policy to try and find the one or three sentences that were changed. Of course, they are color-coded as always, so you can easily see what has been changed. But give me an idea of why, why was this changed? So that's kind of my, I call it cheat sheet that I gave you. And right behind it, the staple packet that says Ohio Local Update, Overview and Comments, Volume Forty-One, Number One. That's where I took this cheat sheet. So if you want further explanation of more detail, it's in that staple packet. Okay, so this is just overview information. And so when I, we do third reads and I typically take the podium and I kind of talk through where they come out. I'm just going to use this cheat sheet. So that's where that comes from, but it all comes off of the big packet. So I just narrowed down from twelve, thirteen pages into a two-pager, just to kind of give a brief overview. So moving on, is everything will be good so far?
It's a bit.
Awesome. Okay, the first blocket of policies that you come to are all type of weapons. Because they show up four different places. They show up in the thousands, the three thousands, the four thousands, and the seven thousands. Policies read exactly the same, and so the revisions are exactly the same. And so you can see where the changes are. Red, just reminder, red is what they have removed. And green is what they have added. So anything in red is what was there before. Now they're taking out, green is the new language that has gone in. And so for all four of these policies, sixteen, seventeen, thirty-two, seventeen, forty-two, seventeen, and seventy-two, seventeen, deal with the changes of Senate Bill Two-Fifteen, House Bill Ninety-Nine, talking about concealed carry rules. And still reminding people that, yes, there are laws have changed for concealed carry. But you still have to follow school rules about how, just because you have concealed carry, doesn't mean you can go walking into a school with your concealed carry. There's still rules that abide by that. And then it's also kind of laying out the rules. As we talked about before, if you choose to arm your staff members, here's a rule if you still need to follow, that's in there. So that's the basic of the update for those four policies. So any questions on those four?
Just a point of clarification on the second page on one-six, one-seven. It indicates that will notify the public that there's been authorization for one or more person to be armed, but that person is not to be named.
Correct.
Or identified.
Correct. If we get to that point where you make that decision.
So, I don't question that. So, but the S- the Searls would definitely, of course, know who this person is.
Yeah, this is dealing with your staff members. Your, your law enforcement agencies, that's a different story. They don't, they don't ponder this policy.
Yeah, but the question I have is that person is not supposed to be known by the public.
Correct.
Or even to students. However, the Searls know who that sentence, that's my question.
I don't know, because we don't have.
We don't have that policy.
So.
We're not letting.
Oh, we won't have it.
In the event.
Okay, that'd be part of the steps we would get if we got to that point that you wanted to. And add that. Okay, okay, I'll come to the next one.
That would be logical, though.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, that would be something we could put in place.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, are there any questions on these four policies? Rob? Move this on?
It's twenty percent of the update. There we go. The next blocket you should have, that I tried to ask my secretary to kind of put them together, should be two policies. Twenty-four thirty and twenty-four thirty-one. We good? Make sure it stays spot. This is just an update that kind of came out of Senate Bill One-eighty-one. Whereas there was question before about religious apparel. Like if I'm wearing something that I feel there were some times before, it's like, well, you really can't wear that. But this is just clarification, say, yeah, they can wear, as long as it's not a hindrance to or safety issue, like I have to wear my chain. Well, you can't be running around with a chain hanging out. But I do wear a shirt under my uniform that represents a religious thing that I believe in. Oh, that's fine. That's fine. You're good. You can't, can't tell you, you have to take it off. It's just covered. Yeah, well, even if it's not covered. If it's part of a regular uniform, something they want to do. For example, if you're wearing a yarmulke. You know, that's fine. Keep it on.
Well, there are religious chains that are probably small in size.
Right, as long as it's not a safety issue.
Yeah.
And but if we tell everybody, hey, you can't wear a chain, then no one can wear a chain if we say, well, everyone wear a chain, but you can't wear that one. Then that's wrong. It's just whatever you permit for safety reasons, and it's not interfering. Let them wear. It's just clarification.
Thank you. So, lethal application.
Correct. And it's similar to what they, what they've done. You know, with, with clubs activities, like, so you give an art project. Draw a painting, that's something, something that means to you, well, maybe my painting is religious in nature. That's fine. It's not a problem. Whereas, you know, we're not really supposed to have, you know, paintings of religious, no, it's fine. If that's what they want to do for the assignment, it's okay. So it's just giving clarification that that is okay. Their students aren't allowed to have that freedom of religious expression.
And the inter-scholastic Catholics?
Same thing. Same thing. So if I, if I'm wearing a shirt that everybody else would wear, and like a sleeve, I think of a sleeve under a basketball uniform. You know, and on my sleeve, I have a religious symbol. That's fine. Instead of telling, hey, turn that inside out, and display that. No, it's fine. If we let people wear t-shirts under their uniforms and you see the sleeves. Who cares if it says Nike? Who cares if it has a religious expression? It doesn't matter. It's not interfering.
There is more to be about eligibility than it does athletic wear.
Right, yeah. And but you have to put the line in there on page two that just says that they can go ahead and they can wear.
And just to clarify, not to be overly minutia, but you just said, like, if it's Nike, I'm, are we sure on that? Because I thought it, I guess, the religious symbol, but I thought, I know there have been. But there have been bans on at least unless there's a very recent rule change in less than a year, where you can't show specific logos on anything that's used as part of a uniform or under the uniform. Do we need clarification on this? I think it's fine still for the policy. I'm just saying for, just be careful with that, with what he used as an example of the Nike that I've experienced a sport that hits.
Yeah.
Referred to that. For my child.
Yeah.
So the top of page two on twenty-four thirty-one appears not to be about clothing. It appears to be about eligibility. Do you want to speak to that for a moment? That looks to be an addition at the top there. Top one.
Under, I, she has, I have a copy of that one, because it should be automatically filled in, that the option wanted to. It's a which one you have, my original documents.
Which one are you on?
Which one?
Two-four, twenty-four thirty-one. Top of page two.
Oh, yeah, this is already filled out. This is one that we've already filled out, because it's, it's how we do our eligibility.
So is there an addition?
Okay, but that's twenty-four thirty-one, you said?
Yes. And it still appears to have options to it, Rob, so I'm wondering if that's.
Yeah. My copy is different.
Do you want to provide us, want to send us later today?
Yeah, I apologize for that.
So this, what we're talking about is the options should be concluded up here before we go right after Monday night.
We do, we do eligibility by quarter, by quarter.
All right, so I'm gonna do that and get it corrected. Anything else on those two policies? Any further questions and comments?
Those, those are clarification. I know you have made a lot of emphasis on religion. This policy does not cover anything else outside religion, like politics.
That, great, okay. It's just the update, just, that's where the update is. Are we good with those two? Okay, so then the next blocket of three, you should come across.
Packet may not be in order, so go with eligibility of residents first, and then the diabetes will come after that.
Yeah.
Or, and then we're not in order, so.
Okay. We'll look at three policies together that's five-one-one-one, eighty-three-twenty and eighty-three-third.
And then, thank you for the clarification.
Okay. Once again, this is one where the update applies to all three of these, so that's why we have all three of them. This deals with the Safe at Home Act. Hold on.
Five-one, oh, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it should be, I tried to, I asked my secretary, I made sure she kept her clipping together, so.
That's very helpful.
We go through. Instead of you. Okay, sorry, lock, blocks, lockets, whatever.
It is now. It's a block that's a Rob Bogman word now.
That's a, well, that's a master schedule.
Ah, yes. Okay. It's all that. Got a lot to do.
So five-one-one, eighty-three-twenty, eighty-three-thirty, all deal with the Safe at Home program. Before, we didn't ask for verification. But now it's the, the changes basically say that the they should be receiving a card from the Secretary of State, and we just ask to see that card. So if you're saying you're part of the Safe Safe at Home program, that means that we won't release any of your information, any of your addresses. But just show us the card that proves that you're part of that program. And so that deals when you're talking about eligibility of students, when you're talking about personnel files, and you talk about student records. That if there's parts that we would not let people see, because it's a part of this program, we just ask to show the card that they should be receiving, and then we mark it as Safe at Home.
Do you want to explain what the Safe at Home is?
Safe at Home is a protective act, like people that may have restraining orders against family members that were in abusive relationships, and they're trying to get away from those people, so they apply to be part of this program for safety. They've relocated, they're trying not to be located. And so as long as they provide that information to us, we do not release any of their information, it would be covered under, you know, direct reinformation. So we make sure that those, similar to FERBA. You know, we're part for, you're opting out of FERBA, so we won't release your information. This just says, okay, we won't list your address anywhere. And we usually put a tag on e-school, and we pull up their name in e-schools, so teachers and staff can see. Alert, don't release this information.
Is that when someone is basically saying they're going to go to, you know, Lakota East, and when they must go, when they, like, process or their information, that's, yes, enroll, sorry, when they enroll, that's the card that you're speaking of, that they give you, and then from there on.
Before it was, if you just tell us, we have to take your warrant.
Okay.
So now this is, well, you shouldn't be getting a card. And so, or the new law is, you have to show us the card, and we'll, we'll go ahead. Follow the measures of.
And there's, and there, the policy is, they should always have a card. I mean, not in ours, but on, on the other side of it, they will always receive a card.
Correct. Correct, and that's why they're putting that in, is that they should have a card to verify. And so you need to ask for that card, not just take their warrant.
So in this part, Rob, though, it says that, like, the non-custodial parent asks, we will give them the access to the student's record, the district will take away the names and the addresses.
Yeah. Is whatever is encompassing that Safe at Home Act will, will honor that.
Personal files?
Same thing, copy on this, because I want to see someone's personal file.
And student records. Are there any questions for him on five-one-one, eighty-three-twenty or eighty-three-third?
All right, hopefully the next block packet paper clipped are two policies, fifty-three thirty-five and fifty-three thirty-six. This most deals with care of students. This is, make sure it's there, we good? Okay, these two deal with the passage of legislation, House Bill Two-thirty-one. And so the changes reflect the area of student health care, including medical management responding to food allergies in a, in a school setting. One of the biggest things that we see out of this for us is, you know, we have heavy pins on hand. It's just clarify the rule that don't lock them up, because if you need them in an emergency situation, and you'd be ready, available. So if something happens at the basketball game, and the nurse has the keys, well, they have your pins, they're locked up. Like, no, they need to be in being a place where they're easily accessible. So that's one of the changes of the law. We get every attention, just make sure they're easily. So if you like the.
Our staff has notified where that is.
Once we get that in there, yes, yes, we'll let them know that this is where it's located, or we're somewhere to like a AED machine, all by, you know, you know what it is, you know where it is. It was still possibly in the nurse's office, but it would be. Everyone would know where it is.
Wouldn't be locked up. And then the diabetes?
Similar, same thing, same language for both, just kind of some change in medication management. But where they are, it's, it's nothing that is not, yeah, it's nothing that is incorrect practice. It's just written out furthermore, just policy. So, and I had our manager at Healthcare Services in Denver. There's no concerns.
Okay, any questions on fifty-three thirty-five or fifty-three thirty-six?
Okay. All right, so then, hopefully the next one we come up to is policy twenty-two. Preschool program. Give everybody a chance to get there. You're not there by there. This is just update of a lot of definitions, talking about what is a preschool classroom. Now, what clarifies the classes that may be offered by districts operating preschool programs? Updates are aligned with current regulatory requirements. It's not a change in practice for us. We've already implemented these requirements, I remember in the spring. Our director, Andrea Longworth, was talking about these, the changes, we need to be able to define, make sure we let our public know when they start to enroll that these are the new standards and definition in which we are operating in. It's not changing practices are already implemented in a part of our administrative.
Any questions on twenty-two eighty? I noticed that they're taking out he and she, and they're putting child.
They did add some other places. Norm said it's just kind of language cleanup. So there's not confusion if you're talking about student, staff, parents, that they just try and use what they're talking about, they're talking about the child.
I noticed that in some of the other documents.
Yeah, some of the other ones where they talk about parents and students, the school officials, they'll say, the student, the parent. And so it's not confusing on which he, she are we talking about.
Okay. It's a little cleaner.
Yeah. And then he said, he said, that's one of the things that they're not going to change everything. But as the policy comes up, they'll go ahead and stick that in there.
Any questions on twenty-two eighty? Just on that first sentence, and this isn't even a change in the policy, but it says that we'll give the license to operate the preschool. Since we contract that with the ESD, since they're doing it on our behalf, we're covered, correct? Thank you. We would operate under their license. Right. Just wondering, anything else you're working? Putting more thirteen? I'm sorry, go ahead, Isaac.
Yeah. Um, this, this it doesn't indicate the age. If you look at, after the impression, see, the next step was the child.
Here's what, here's what it will say, it'll say age of three, or before August first.
Yeah.
Oh. When is that?
Passing that first instance in this. It's the next paragraph, after season three, honor after.
I was, oh, I was interested in preschool, or the child, and he's age of three, probably, but I was, but, sorry, I just didn't remember. I just didn't remember.
Yeah.
What were your thoughts?
Couldn't read.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
Okay, twenty-four thirteen should be your next one. This is career advising. This deals with provisions down in Senate Bill One-thirty-five. Just several requirements for career advising, just about the information that must be provided to students specifically, how the cost of post-secondary education can be offset as well as information about certain career fields that require industry-recognized credentials, certificates, to publish to students. Just making sure we are giving them all the information, as you see, added there, some new information they want us to include when we do this career advice.
Glad they're adding the bill of role and opportunities. And I like that we're offering more much more information about options. So that's cool.
Yep.
But only questions on, we don't want to get colleges on board talk, or not.
No, you have to research that. Investigate.
Anything else on twenty-four thirteen? All right.
Okay. Thirty-one twenty-oh-eight, employment and personnel for co-curricular, extracurricular. Just they decided to add clarifying language, talking about if you are not a teacher, you do need to get that pupil activity permit in order to coach or be involved in any kind of athletic activity. We have to have that. If you are a teacher, you only need to get that if it is dealing with an activity that is of a physical nature. So if I'm a teacher and I want to do yearbook club, I don't have to get a pupil activity permit. But if I'm from the outside, I need to get a pupil activity permit, because I'm not a teacher.
I was saying, including a neck fracture?
Yeah, that's part of the pupil activity permit.
What is the process for pupil activities, what is that look like?
It's like a background check that goes through the state to make sure there's nothing that would be of concern, there's no history, just like we do similar with the teachers, it's background check. Just to make sure there's no records that we should be aware of. And.
It's just basically a nice thing to say about. Okay.
And then what it also means is that they've gone through some requirements of basic first aid training.
So it's first aid.
So that, that, that's why if a teacher a teacher doesn't need to have it unless it is an activity that's physical in nature, because then they need to go through that certification training, if they want to have a first aid in a physical activity versus yearbook. You'd be okay. Yeah.
I, I want to know how this relates to, say, a teacher or a principal inviting somebody from outside to come and speak to a group.
What is the process? Has nothing to do with this. This, this is just leading a group of kids. I'm overseeing students at an activity, whether it's co-curricular or extracurricular.
Could be a club, it could be helping coach the basketball team.
If I'm coming in to speak to a class, that's not that. Then, that's just following then your classroom visitor procedures that you would have at the building.
Do we have, do we have a policy on that?
Yeah.
No, no, on invitation from outside to speak to.
No, we don't, as far as who's allowed.
Yeah.
Or what is the process of? It's up to their discretion.
Becca.
Yeah. It's up to their discretion.
To the individual building administrator. It's up to the administrator in the building.
So the board has no, any overview of that at all?
Well, well, no, because we have policies about if you are agreeing, someone that may be teaching on a controversial topic, you need to follow the policy on controversial topics. If you're bringing in someone who's political, make sure you follow the policy that talks about bringing in people from the outside to talk about politics and what we do. We have numerous polys, policies on, right? So you still follow the policies, it may not just be one policy covers everything. It's, there's multiple policies that are in play there. So if you bring in a visitor, number one, they bear not be bringing a weapon. Number two, they bear not have drugs. Numbers, you know, and you kind of go through, those are all different policies, but they still apply to that. We don't want someone walking in that would violate all of the policies you have in place.
Julie, did you have, I figured out my own question, so. Good, all right. Anything for them? Sixty-seven hundred?
Okay, sixty-seven hundred, the Fair Labor Standards Act, just language has been added, and this is one of those where it's not in law, but my guess is there's been some cases around the state of people not honoring a reasonable obligation to provide nursing mother's breaks to take care of what they need to take care of. And so it's just clarify language with all reasonable help, give them some time to take care of the things they need to do as a nursing mother. Within reason, it's not, well, I need to do it every thirty-five minutes, so I can't really teach today. No, it's, it's, it's when you have to do that, schedule it, work with them accordingly. Don't tell them, hey, too bad, it's so sad, you can't, you can't be a nursing mother, work here. So if someone's gotten in trouble around the state in a couple places.
For saying.
It's over. It's just clarifying, make sure everybody knows, hey, this is still the rule, and please follow.
How do we provide separate spaces for nursing mothers?
They work on at the building level. It could be somewhere in the clinic. It could be an empty conference room that gets locked, so that they have that privacy.
Could be a classroom.
We've had a treasurer's office where we, an office that have a window, something like that, like a third space. You're blocked, you're going to sign up. Yeah. Sign, feel stuff. Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Right, any further questions on sixty-seven hundred? Twenty-four forty?
Seventy-four forty, just facility security. This is one that's added, but it's really not, it's not something we have to worry about. It's just saying that they have allowed by law, they can use metal detectors to check for bait pins too. That's it. Because inside bait pins, there's select, there's metal cartridges that help the, I don't understand at all, that helps the bait bin fire up. It's actually, if someone's hiding a bait, and you could want them, and that would notify you to deliver a bait. It just says, you're allowed to do that now. Not that we are doing that at all, or should we? But it's just in policy that if you wanted to.
Any questions on the study four forty? Right.
All right.
Seventy-four forty point oh three?
This is real easy. This is just simple. Just a new federal regulation citation at the very end. That's just it. There's no language. It's just, if you look at the very end, now it's eighty-six R four-three-one-four.
I think we can move on.
That's it.
All right.
It's not anywhere else you'll find it. Okay, are we good? Eighty-two-ten, full calendar? Okay, all this is, is a revision that allows you that you can do two calendar year at once, instead of one at a time. You just have that option where before it was every year. Now you can, you can do two at a time if you want. It's just, it's specific to whatever you want to do, and just language is added, just because, just clarifying that a building specifically may be closed for whatever reason. So if we have high illness at one building, we may just close that building and not all the buildings, and just clarifies that you can do that under, and it doesn't, doesn't go into like your school calendar impact. It's just, hey, we had a situation in one building, so now we have that flexibility in the language that we can do that in one building.
Any questions on eighty-two-ten? All right. Eighty-six hundred?
Eighty-six hundred, last one of the nineteen. This is, once again, this is nothing new that we have not been unfamiliar with, but it's clarification about the thirty-minute rule travel time of deeming something as unreasonable, and also the kind of reminds people that if you start the year with these transportation routes, you can't all of a sudden in December decide, well, we don't want to provide that. Like, what you start on the first day of school, you have to continue to provide those special routes all the way through the end of the year. And then if you want to assess whether we're going to continue to transport to location A or B, then you can do it. You just can't decide in the middle of the year. Now we're no longer going to provide transportation to that off-site location. You can't do that. You have to.
Any questions on eighty-six hundred? Just to clarify, Rob, the thirty minutes is from the school thing that they would attend.
So those are the nineteen updates from New York.
Good job, Mr. B.
Well, we're fine.
Very efficient, thank you.
So any question on those nineteen? Because if not, what we'll do is we'll have them, as you saw them with a big. I'll fix twenty four thirty one and send out to everybody, just so you see that, those will then be up to the first read, add to them. Correct?
So let me preface the conversation on zero one six nine point one. What we're aiming for is to come up with our first read for Monday night. So we're going to take this, I think, paragraph by paragraph.
Sure.
Mr. Volgman?
Yep. So the top.
Changes or questions, there's a place for.
The top page I gave you is just kind of, I did some homework, just kind of seeing, okay, um, what are other districts doing? What does their public participation look like, what is in their policy that maybe not in our policy, I just got some food for thought. So I did every GMC school, uh, just kind of see how they did their public participation and some other schools that according to OD we are, what I quote like. That. That's, I just wanted you to see that because as I go through, I can tell you kind of, hey, here's the line, and this is where I got it from. And let's get, this is just a starting point, I'm not, this is just my suggestions and we can. Redline, delete, add, do whatever, so. Uh, as we go down through on the policy, of course, nothing changes in the first paragraph, second paragraph. It is, I pulled this from level one, it's just reminding people that um. Board conducts this meeting in public, but that the regular scheduled business meeting is a limited public forum, it isn't open mic night. Uh, it, it is a limited public forum, it's not, you can do whatever you want to do, say whatever you do, it's just a reminder that it is limited. And there, there are controls in place for it. So. You don't have to have it there, we can get rid of it, just.
I have a suggestion addition, and for our audience, this is kind of like watching sausage get made when you do. The work we're about to do, so just bear with us, there will be a lot of wordsmithing and those kind of things, so understand that's a normal part of the process. So in the second paragraph, right after a third line, voluntary nature of the board's time and using that time efficiently. I suggest the addition of to complete the business of the district. Making it clear that that is what that business meeting is for.
I'm sorry, you're on the third paragraph?
Third line of the second paragraph, voluntary nature of the board's time and using that time efficiently. Suggestion is to add to complete the business of the district. It's always our goal at our regular business meeting, so.
And carry on the rest of these.
And then carry on with the rest of it. I think that's redundant, but.
And yeah.
I mean, we talked about how it's a business meeting, so I think. I'm finding there either.
It's just emphasis.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then in there, we'll move to the next paragraph. Okay, uh, the next paragraph is uh. Where we have allowed public comment at all meetings, including special meetings, this just basis says, we won't necessarily do it at all special meeting, but we may. Depending on what the meeting may, you may want to allow it, you may not.
I thought so.
Yeah.
Be recognized. I'm sorry, I thought it was interesting in your synopsis of all the surrounding districts that none of the other GMC schools or are like districts that. Commented their special meeting, so I think it's nice to leave us that option, um, but. But it was, yeah, it was interesting that no other, we were the only ones who are currently doing that.
If we were to not have it at a meeting, what would be the basis of not having a full participation and why would we choose this meeting versus the other?
It would be added to a special meeting, it would, we're never going to do it in a special meeting unless we add it to the agenda. So it wouldn't be a case of taking it off, it's just never going to be here.
So the business is basically saying that we plan on not having public comment at future meetings.
That's just.
Future special meetings. Potentially.
But I'm sure, but most schools don't do it.
Yeah, no other school doesn't, but we, but we do it, right?
We just started. Started doing it in March.
So why now would we be taking it away when it seems to the public that you're preventing them from speaking?
No, I think regular meetings is where. Everybody can speak, special meetings is where you do only.
But we've been having it as special meetings, so now all of a sudden we're taking it away. That seems very suspicious to the community members and it seems to them that you're trying to shut them up.
Or it seems that we're trying to follow a better practice of the other, every other school district and the GMC. And at the state level, for nobody at the state level at any session that I went to that has comments.
I will say that. And I, I don't know what you attended, like you were at Capitol Conference, but I saw other board members in many of the same meetings that I was in. And there were, we attended specifically meetings that. Sessions about meetings and public participation and. Best practices is, is exactly what Julie was talking about, listened to a lot of experts, so. I would say it's probably based on the recommendations from that, any other objections to that? Well, it doesn't change the fact that the perception is that you're, at this point in time, you look like you guys are trying to intimidate the public. You're trying to prevent them from speaking if you don't like the topic, and Matt has already tried to intimidate the community, you've tried to intimidate me with your letter. I've responded and again, you will not hurt, you will not intimidate us and. We're not going to stop speaking up.
Okay, great, but we're, we're doing this.
This one.
Not talking about any other thing, you gotta stick to the topic, it's not the topic.
So our time is limited today, we have another meeting, I'm going to bring us back on the agenda. And we've been heard, Mrs. Bodie, are there any comments on the third paragraph?
I think that's very helpful to be able to include that then in the public notice, because I've had a lot of feedback, people saying, are we, are we not, you know, because it was in policy, now that would. It would be part of that public notice, everybody would be able to see it as well. Make some of the guesswork out of it.
All right, thank you.
Okay, um, so then moving, as you continue to move down. Uh, you get to the following rules, and you come to. Number one, number two, number three, and then you see four, five and six. What I did here is if you look at the old, if you kind of look. This was in policy before, it just was in a paragraph toward the end that I felt was kind of misplaced. It talked about, and you can see if you look on page three, you can see redlined in the middle. Where it says participants must be residents, property owner, business owner of the district. And be introduced as such and have legitimate interest in the action of the board. The board may also recognize representatives of firms eligible to bid on material and services solicited by the board. The board may also recognize any employee or student of the district, so instead of just having that paragraph there. I basically just took that, put it up where we say who can speak, well, why would we put it in two different places? So it's adding where we stay back there, employees can speak, and we say students can speak, and we say representative firms eligible to bid on materials or services solicited by the board. Can speak, so it's just putting that up there with the one, two and three.
I believe this is also limiting, sorry, go ahead.
I just, I have a, have we always? Like representative firms eligible to bid on materials, I mean, is it going to be like a sales pitch?
Remember having.
I've, I've never remember seeing that, I mean, are we going to have people up to the mic by the cellist pop ears or? Painting, I, I.
To me, it feels like they should, I'm sorry. I feel like for me, I'm not comfortable with six, I would rather have that go through Chris Bissarch. And if he has somebody that he would like us to speak with, or they could request to speak via Chris. So that it does not become our time of the mic instead of being used by residents is being used by people who are trying to solicit a sale from us.
I think that was already in there, so. Something would happen in pre-meeting. Perhaps.
Yeah, right. Is everyone comfortable in taking six out?
Yeah, I don't think that's necessary for us to. Hear about.
Can you like to replace sex with anybody who pays federal taxes? Because we receive federal taxes, but I think again, we are limiting who is speaking.
I disagree with that. Oh, I thought she was going to start.
I am.
Yeah, I, I disagree with that, that's a. You have to have, you have to live in a district or be one of these. In my opinion.
Yeah, um.
Mr. Dean?
Yeah, uh, at the CPTA conference, I know experts brought this up. And the, the entire. Um, district in Ohio, oh, by this, you have to be a resident member. I mean, a resident or a business owner in the community to speak. That is what is. Don't follow this.
And, and I agree with you, Mr. Dean, that's what we heard, and I also want to be sure that. Since we have a time limit, that that time is used by our businesses, I think that that's important for them to take first priority. All right, we've had a suggestion, I'm not sure that I hear support for that, anything else on? Who can speak? Employees is an addition, Mr. Volgman?
No, it was in that paragraph toward the end, says employees are urged to speak, we just did.
Students?
That was.
Where I've always been, students have always been.
All right, any other?
We just didn't have it. Yeah, we had two separate parts.
No, I think this is clear. And put, I think somebody reading it should see that toward the start of policy anyway. Um, any other comments?
Number six then?
Yes.
So just, just to act today. I know, I, a video was even shown, just wanted to make uh, an emphasis of this, a video was shown of. A bit, somebody that wanted to speak in the meeting that had to go rent an apartment, do you remember? Rent an apartment in that school district. It's six hundred dollars, just to make sure. He spoke at the next meeting and asked how the person said to speak.
Not in our district, in a different.
In a different district, so I'm, I'm giving you an instance of how it is even applicable in every other district.
So you're saying if someone wants to speak and they don't live in the district, they need to pay six hundred dollars?
No, 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 I'm giving you an example, I'm saying. They even show also a stample video of somebody.
A resident.
Who, who came to speak in the meeting, I was denied. He went back. Because he wanted to really speak in that school district. He went and rented an apartment and paid six hundred dollars and was able to, I wasn't able to speak in the next thing, because they shot him down, he made the definition of being a resident as a school district.
All right, anything else on eligible speakers? I think we're good with that, Mr. Volgman, how about C?
Letter C is in addition, I pulled this out of Cincinnati Public, I just thought it was an idea of kind of encouraging students to speak. That if students do want to speak, that we will work with them uh, to ensure that we do hear from them, since they are the number one customer we serve. Um, that they would have priority uh, at the discretion of the presiding officer to move them to the front of the, the list, does, just to suggest.
I kind of disagree with your statement, so I don't think that's a good one. I disagree with that, we serve the, the students, um, we teach the students, but we're ultimately serving the, the parents, and I think this, um. I would never, personally, I would never copy something that Cincinnati Public. Probably implements um, in their um. In their school system, and then this effectively prioritizes the concerns of students over the parents, and I think it's very disrespectful.
Students are who we service. That's our number one.
We teach them, but we service the parents.
I personally, on this one, I like just the first sentence, and I thought the rest could be was unnecessary, again, it, it basically talks about potentially moving. The public comment, we can always do that if we amend an agenda at a meeting, but I don't think it needs to be spelled out. Or prioritized in my opinion, I do like that first sense that just says the board encourages students to speak and be heard during. Board meetings, especially on issues that will have a direct impact on their experience in school, and I felt that that was. That was enough in that paragraph, in my opinion.
And toward a, a broader point as we walk through this, because the next section, I'll be talking about it as well. I think it's important to remember that some of the detail in here is perhaps more applicable to administrative guidelines. So our policy sets the direction for what the board wants to do, and our administrative guidelines are how we actually implement the policy. So. I hear Mrs. Shaker saying take that or move the presiding officer.
Remove everything but first.
Remove it all, and are you suggesting if you put in administrative guidelines, or do you not think it's necessary?
I personally don't think it's necessary, but again, that's up to somebody who's better at the detail of, if you feel like that would be helpful, but I don't find.
I think they're just handled in an agenda, frankly. Um, anything else? And are we supportive of that change?
Yeah, no problem.
Great.
So we just keep the person.
In the first sentence, we can cut the rest.
Are you, you've been cutting the rest or moving it?
It sounded like we're just cutting it. All right, anything else?
All right, letter D, there's two options here, um, this comes from uh. Looking at Sycamore, Madison, Forest Hills, kind of how they run, I know there's been concern about signing a piece of paper at the front desk. And everybody's seeing my address, and so one of the things they do is at, uh. I forget which, I think it's for sales, you give each person a card. So they fill out the card, it comes back in, it's not laying or enough for people to see their information, it's, it's their card, it comes back in. That's what you use to sign up instead of a Excel sheet, when everybody's writing their names and addresses, it's kind of gives that privacy piece, I thought that might be of interest. Um, but also kind of talks about like with Madison. With their recent litigation, their public comment is their rule is they have forty eight hours. Uh, in advance of the meeting, I just put one business day as a placeholder, I have no intention, it could be, it could be noon of the day of the meeting, it can be up to the start of the meeting. But then there's a placeholder of an option, that's what Madison does through there, so that's kind of in that. First section uh, of option A, option B is just keeping the way we do, if they sign up, as they come in, it's just instead of an Excel sheet, it's cards. And how we would manage those cards going through public comment instead of. Running up an Excel sheet, it'd be a stack of cards in which we have all the information on a card, uh, and then we would use those cards in order. We would number them in order which they're handed out and returned, and then those would be given to the presiding officer and it goes through the cards. There's an option.
I'd like to start if I could. I'm going to suggest for both option A or B is we consider this. That we move part of this to administrative guidelines, and again, this is a bylaw. Which requires a higher standard to change the policy. And more requirements to change the policy, I would like to take the detail out of it and put it into administrative guidelines. So for option A, as we're considering it. I would like us to stop after participants will be asked to provide proof of residency in Lakota Local Schools Butler County, Ohio. And remove the remainder, should we choose that option to administrative guidelines. And if we consider option B. Uh, same place, participants will be asked to provide proof of residency in Lakota Local Schools Butler County. And move that. Second portion explaining the cards and all that into administrative guidelines. Does anyone have an objection to that?
I have a question, how would you provide proof um, that you're in? Let's hold that, let's hold that thought for just a moment, you know, I just want to know what that would look like, because I feel that there might be some issues or instances where that would cause. Fusion and trouble and, and I just, is there a sure way to provide that evidence? Again, there's Cincinnati, there's, you know, there's, you have your in town, but then you have like the people that live on the outskirts that are in addition. So I feel like that line is kind of blurry and it might cause a little bit more.
I think it's definitely worth discussion, so the question on the floor right now is moving that piece into administrative guidelines. Cleans the policy up, is there any objection to doing that? So depending on which option we go with, it would be the same way both of them. We may choose to go with cards, we may choose to go with an information sheet, we may choose to go with some other method, but. That would be left up to administrative guidelines, and if one method doesn't work, it is easier for us then to change whatever that habit is. So I do not hear objection to that. Mrs. Bodie has raised a question about how do we prove proof of residency, let me ask the board this, a broader question. Do we believe it's important to have a proof of residency for our speakers?
I do.
Wow.
It seems important.
I think from what I learned, in, in some school district, even show your ID. If you move then show evidence that you bring one of your people to show that leaving this news. And I, I don't know which. Class of that in the session, but you usually.
I think we should definitely.
Yeah. You usually IDed.
So Mrs. Bodie is in disagreement. I'm hearing yes to residence and.
I, I feel like we also need to ask proof of residency, kind of what we have up there of who can speak. For business ownership or legal guardianship of an enrolled student, because otherwise I feel like there could be a business owner, so they would need to. Provide one of those options, otherwise they're limited to those Christmas.
Toward this point, and I, it's certainly a valid point. Point of proof of residency, we think that's important. That. Steers me more toward the forty eight hours or one business day or whatever it is that prior notice. So that there's an opportunity for staff to check that. So there are many options, and I'm probably not thinking of all of them, it could be a bill that has that address on it, it could be that. Our staff checks the Butler County Auditor's website to determine if that address is in Lakota School District.
We look at similar to what our policy is for uh, student enrolling. Because we have a lot of that spelled out there, like this is what it takes to become a student at Lakota, so maybe we could just kind of clone that similar type. You know, it could be bill, there's many different ways that we can do that.
And again, I would put that in administrative guidelines if we go in that direction.
I think this is silly, I think we're not voting, we're, we're screwed, the, the community is not.
I think this is silly, I think we're not voting, we're put, we're screwed, the, the community is not voting, they're speaking. From their heart to the board with concerns or even, um. Positive, positive information that we're doing well, and I just think, again, we're controlling what, we're trying to control too much what is being said, because lately. People do not like what's being said, even though it is truth. And they're trying to censor those who are speaking at, speaking out, and I think, and you, at a time like this, this is just the wrong way, wrong time to, to do this. And I think it's, uh, you're, I think it's tone deaf to, to, um. To propose, it's at a time right now where, uh, we see the school district and the parents are at a conflict. Um, over, you know, rights on how to, how to raise our children, and, um. I think it's just ridiculous. Isaac and then Helen.
Okay. Very good point. And that is why. It is very, very crucial that we limit that thirty minutes to people that. Live in the district and have keys in the district, so that they are heard, because if we don't put that control there. Somebody can come and take the, I mean, that thirty minutes is very crucial, we need to hear from people that matter. And that is why every school district wants to do that, to ensure we're hearing from the right people. You have a child in this good district, you live in this good district, you have business in this good district, we need to hear you. Because the thirty minutes at the end, we can't, we let some people go back home. Who knows, somebody that does not live in that school district. Took this place of somebody that lived in this good district, all this is to make sure we're. Doing the right thing, so that we hear the right people.
I, I, I don't, I don't agree, I don't think we're censoring anybody, I think to be quite blunt, our meetings are a three ring circus and we can't get any business done. And it has nothing to do with what people are saying. It has everything to do with the decorum and how people are acting, and I think the only way we're going to get any kind of business done. Is we've got to have some, some of these policies in place, this is not unique to Lakota. Obviously, by the sheet, everybody is doing the same thing. Where we are right now. Has nothing to do with what is being said at the mic, it's how it's being said at the mic, in my opinion, and we've got to have some guidelines in place.
Well, if you made better choices, it wouldn't be so. Start being back off, board.
Let's get our work done. I'm going to say what I'm hearing from the board. What I'm hearing from the board is the majority is saying they do think proof of residency is important. We are good with moving the details of that to an administrative guideline and pulling some. Details out of how we do our enrollment in terms of verification. So the other big question here, and I might do the time again, everybody, I want to keep the discussion going if we can. Is option A. Do we want to continue as we're doing now with signing up as you come into the meeting? Or do we want to make it a. Some kind of an arbitrary timeframe ahead of time to allow staff the opportunity. To verify residency. So really quickly on this topic, please.
I think it depends on which option we go with, I mean, I think.
That's the question.
Well, I think it depends on like if we're going to, so if we've decided that we're going to verify addresses, then I think we need to. Have a way to do that, and if it's a twenty four hour period that they sign in on Google Docs via Adam, then. I, 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 I. Definitely like the idea of card versus a sign and sheet, because. Then you can't sign other people in, and that's been happening quite a bit.
Well, you're actually allowed to sign people in.
You're not allowed to sign.
Yes, you are, they can't make it on behalf of.
Individuals may not register others.
So we're going to get to that, but then they try another person in attendance, that's name and address on behalf of.
We're going to get to that in a few minutes, let's still, where we're at, which is A or B.
I say neither, I say I keep the prior, prior.
So you're going with B, if you're saying that.
But it's still a.
Saying cards, it's still talking about cards. So removing the cards out to administrative guidelines, the methodology is not what we're talking about, we're just talking about, can you do it at the meeting? Or. Do we want to have some period of time and, and as. Rob said, it could be noon in the day of. But some period of time that allows for verification, so can I ask for A or B?
B.
Julie?
C. I love A, but I think it is onerous to the individual to have to come to Lakota Central Office, which is what this wording currently says, in order to register.
Email notification.
So I, I personally like A, but I would like to modify it rather than. You know, in that in person, that they have the option of either in person or email, uh, I mean.
Yeah, the email, the email helps with the timestamp. Yeah, that's what I'm worried about on this, is I want to have something that said. Four o'clock, or something, because you don't want expectations to be missed on, somebody says I showed up. And I had something I had to leave for, you know.
So we moved the second sentence of options.
We take out the in person, that does seem.
Yeah, no, we take that, yeah, that's what I mean, take out sentence two. Okay, so when he's can register at Lakota Local School Center.
So we can say, and then email to the treasurer. Or designate.
That can be fine, I mean, that, I'm typically the one that would.
You just set up an email address for that. With the sign and sheet or card or whatever we're going to use.
Form, we could get a form created.
Yes.
Form.
Great. I'm fine. Your way of where they show up at the evening thirty minutes early and then just sign their name in their intent. That, that's B, so I've heard of B, I've heard of modify A.
I, I want to modify A. However. The one business day is too much, we have.
No, we're not. Let's do.
That's in the guidelines.
We'll figure out the timing in a minute.
Okay.
Are you okay with a pre-registration?
Yes.
The modification that it could be done by an email that will be set up for specifically that purpose to make that as easy as possible.
Correct.
I hear yes from Isaac, I hear yes from Julie and Kelly.
Yes.
I'm in agreement with that, would we like to talk about how much time? Is a full business day necessary?
Was something that I was thinking about is, would there be a way that. In an effort to make this as easy as possible and everybody, we could do like a, almost like a TSA pre-check, like once we've established that you're a resident. Then it would have some of that flexibility, maybe. Of a shorter timeline versus the one day prior.
One day is longer.
But then the spots may fill up from somebody who's done it, like, I feel like we're going to have to, whatever we establish guidelines come up within eight hours. Yep, five hours.
Our application.
And, and otherwise, yeah, then the spots will fill up with people who aren't pre-checked, and then the.
Because we see a lot of the same people.
Yes. Would not.
Yeah.
So I, I personally feel like it should, and again, I feel like it's fine in guidelines, but it should be, you know. Six business hours, what.
Is this enough time?
What about five o'clock Friday? And the network can start on Monday mornings, is that reasonable?
I feel like since our agendas go out so late, I do worry that there are times that there might not be people. I feel like, like eight AM Monday morning would be. Set it up time.
That's not enough time, I think let's. Push it to noon. On meeting day.
But what if we have a, a eleven o'clock meeting like today? It's a special meeting that we, but we have public comment, I think we have to be careful about giving a specific time versus an hour.
If the agenda goes out on Friday, then. We have, then let's give it up to maybe. I, I did, I saw this. Because sometimes we see, we give people enough time to be able to get their, their.
So assuming we get everything lined out the right way, I, I think we can do things pretty quickly, hopefully, I mean, we can do checks pretty quick. Just based on the tools we have.
So nine AM? No.
There's.
I don't.
They can't get there at nine AM, they had to not work.
Because if they do, it's on Friday, they have all weekend. Trying to prevent them coming in person, you know.
So can I ask a question, I. What Julie said, I don't know if we should be having a time as much as we should be having hours.
Five hours.
What if we have a meeting on a Tuesday at four? I mean, if we have a special meeting or something we want to require and we're allowing public comments. I mean, we're not always, I mean, I.
We're, we're expecting people then to go track down any time and it'll be a changing time, I don't know that I think changing. Don't you think having a standard is easier for our community to know nine AM?
How about up to.
I, I answered for the meeting starts.
Might not allow for enough time for us to do the check.
Yeah, they gotta do the check, that's. I'm fine with nine AM, that's.
And I think that has to be like when it starts, because I'm right, you're going to have people register a month in advance, like you've got it, it has to be nine around, they register, because otherwise. You don't want people. It's. Which is during the month in advance of.
It's like after the agenda hits.
So have you not been checking in the past, that what we're saying, we are affirming?
They sign in and the list comes up.
They. By check issues.
Yes, yes.
We definitely felt like we had issues when I was sitting in the back of the room, we were doing it all Zoom, I didn't have that, because we were allowing people to call in.
But we're no longer doing it on Zoom, have we had any issues currently, or are we just trying to control who's.
In the last couple of years, yes, we have, in the last couple of years, we have had issues with people outside of the district wanting to speak. And not, yes, we have.
Basically, I want to make sure anybody speaking. Should be the right person, because we need to hear from the right people, that's all, that's not the upside of it. So if nine and nine eight, give us some good time, we will do our verification. Or let's look at, is it, should we use hours or time? So that we can move on.
Yes. I, so they, I'm, I'm sorry, so we start registering at nine AM on Monday. I'm hearing.
That would have been in. And the other point was the start time, so it wasn't. Back to everybody else, yeah, somebody just had a placeholder that. The start time between the agendas are.
So there's got to be a start, so what's to prevent?
At nine AM.
Okay.
From Friday, when agenda is out, or do we. Beginning day at nine AM.
So we need a start, and I think we need to start it, and what's to prevent, again. We have a meeting on January fourteenth, what's to prevent someone from signing up right now?
The agenda being released could make more sense, just because these are about agenda items, so. If you were to sign up before the agenda got released on what the agenda was, you know.
Maybe if we were more consistent on when the agenda was released, it'd be a little easier to make.
That's, that's a different, so. Let's handle this, then, let's create, from about that, yeah.
You feel you have enough pressure?
Yes.
All right. Let's move to E.
Uh, E, that is a, uh, word, uh, grammar check. That's all, it's not changing.
But I think this, I think kind of E, right? When it is email.
Actually, I am going to make a suggestion on this one as well, that just the first sentence be included, I think second sentence is repetitive.
That's what I had on my notes as well, I had done the same edit, I, I feel like the intent of that second sentence can be confused, because the intent was proposed physically unable.
So that's a common issue, though.
Is there objection to removing the second sentence? Right.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry.
I really don't agree, I say.
Let me bounce back to C for one moment. There is a typo, well, we're at a district, woman, student should be students. I'm sorry, I just found that.
So they're not physically able to register, that means they can't physically be here.
No, it means they physically can't.
Emails actually will result in.
Then it, well, that, it says physically not able to be here, so it does. It's made up tomorrow, well, then we need to fix it so that it's.
So the intent, I believe, is to say someone is physically incapable of, somebody is physically not present.
So I read that.
Good question.
And she wrote the other way, so, yeah.
That's probably a good point also, as somebody should also be able to have the opportunity to come in if they needed to, because they might not have an internet. You know, so it shouldn't just be exclusively an internet forum. They still could come into a physical forum if they wanted.
Okay.
So do we need to clean the language up in E to make it?
Well, I think it's a good point, it's not physically.
Different ways.
I would not, I would. I would think physically present is what you're talking about, physically able to mean means you're there, but perhaps there's a motor issue or something along those lines, so.
I'll try and explain what you have.
And then remove that second sentence. I don't want that. All right, can we move on from E? Me, I.
Say, uh, I'm gonna, I.
Well. I'm sorry, I said it that because I, I, there should be change in that. Yeah, take off the, yes, participant must first be recognized by the presiding officer, in practice, they can't find an announcement of your name. Take off and their address, because we are not requiring people to fit that on. It would already be, you know, the video recording. And then I would add the sentence, their address shall be noted on the request to speak.
I'm really okay with people taking their address. But people are not okay with.
We, we added the term may there.
So I would just add this sentence to clarify, their address shall be noted on the request to speak. We do still require an address, we're just not requiring people to.
Because there's been some issues with.
Is there any objection to that addition? All right, Mr. Wollerman, I.
I, um. It's just a reminder that it's not a, uh, Q and A time. It's just, there's, there's no response or a comment, it's a comment, it's not a Q and A time. That was in Northwest, uh. Policy that they have, just a reminder that it's not. You need.
Right.
Um, instead of that sentence, there's no response, the speaker will occur, I would. Uh, recommend changing that should to, should be expected to occur. Because I believe there are times where there's a simple clarification, there's an immediate simple answer, and I would like us to have the ability, should we choose. To be able to do that simple clarification on the spot and not preclude us from having that ability.
But without an expectation that there's going to be a bad.
Exactly, but I think again, so. No response to the speaker, speaker should be expected, instead of no response will occur, so.
Okay.
But.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so am I under the standing that if someone's speaking for the three minutes, that you can respond if you choose to do so?
Except that, that's basically what you're saying. No, no, I'm saying. At the end, again, the way we, it used to be that the presiding officer would answer all the questions at the end, and now we've gone away from that practice. But I think if there's, because we're having people. Get back to people after the fact, um, I think it should state that that's still an option by the presiding officer, if there's a simple clarification.
The way I'm reading this is when they're speaking, not at the very end of the meeting, it, it's.
We don't answer them at all. We don't respond.
That's where you guys are, I, I'm just trying to understand where you guys are coming from.
It used to be at the end of the.
Directly, because this doesn't say at the end, it says when they are hearing public comment.
What if we framed it like this instead? We keep the first sentence, all statements should be directed to the presiding officer. No person may address or question board members individually, but if we add. Speakers should not expect a response from board members for district administration during this time. So not expect.
Clarifies.
Not expecting a response, but it still allows us that opportunity, should we decide to do that along what you're saying, is that clear, Darby?
Sorry, yeah, hold on, let me re-read, sorry.
This is. Yeah, say again, how. Speakers should not expect a response from board members or district administration during this time.
And that's what that says during this time, right?
Right, we're just changing.
It's just clarifying. We're not talking about the end of the meeting.
We're talking about public comment.
Right, yes. Okay, so what, what she was, so what. Julie was stating was at the very end that we should be able to respond.
I don't think that's what Julie.
So then when I just asked, what are you talking about after the three minutes, if we want to respond, you said no. Correct, you didn't let me finish, which was, it would be at the end of the public comment section, which is what we used to do at the end of the thirty minutes. And the presiding officer would have an opportunity to do clarifications, and I don't mean at the end of every three minutes, so that's why I said no. But I couldn't go on to say I meant at the end of the thirty minutes.
So I think we're talking about something like. Somebody coming to the mic and saying, I can't believe that you are all going to go to school on Christmas Day. Well, that's not true, and it's something we can clear up quickly. So at the end of the three minutes, the presiding officer would be able to say, by the way, we aren't going to school on Christmas Day. You know, that's a rumor, whatever, something as simple as that, not a.
Not a, but I'm trying to spread that rumor, by the way.
Yeah, that's an example I could think of on my feet. So I think that's more of what she's talking.
Yeah, the fall festival is going to be October twelfth, and it's actually October thirteenth, I'd like somebody to be able to clarify that it's actually October thirteenth and not, not over twelve, so. It's just clarifying. Simple items that come up at the mic as, oh, and what's. Simple items that come up at the mic is all and what's.
Yeah.
So I will read speakers should not expect a response from board members or district administration during this time. However, it leaves the option open should we want to do that. Are we clear on that one?
Uh, then moving down, um, letter J, just remove all of that. Uh, then the next paragraph is the one that was moved up, talks about students business owner. So it's just the elimination of that because it was redundant. Put up there. Um, letter A is new, uh, that I found this in Hamilton. Um, as know that times people like to bring posters and signs. And that's fine, but it starts to block when uh the tech team is trying to record and people are holding up signs and we can't. See what's going on. It's just saying that we need to. Not be holding up signs and doing that during your business meeting.
I'm going to suggest that we add one word, um, which may obstruct the view of other attendees. And add it in the same place under number one, which may obstruct the view of other attendees.
And therefore. For clarification. This is in the meeting that people can bring their signs outside and do whatever they outside. It was.
Yeah.
And now when when I when I looked at this and I asked legal to take a look at this. May was in there.
They took me out. Because who's to say they can't say if I'm standing there with the sign at my feet. You're probably going to hold that up. You may interfere with that. So you can't have that sign.
So you should not bring this site into the into the meeting.
It's saying that if I bring in a sign, I keep it at my feet. What's the problem? The only problem is when I start holding it up. And it blocks. But if we live in May, we say, well, you can't bring in it because you may hold that up.
But then you need it to either the presiding officer or the SRO or somebody else in the room to determine. This sign doesn't actually obstruct the view of the audience, but you know, a huge sign does. Potential for that it it to be disruptive, that it's something that. I hate to leave the ambiguity, I guess. Rob, I'd like to go back to Jay for a moment when we get done on on this one. Go ahead, June.
Uh, I was, I find K and one redundant with one another and unnecessary to have both components. I believe K without one is. Saying the same thing.
And so then two would be one, three would be two.
That would be my feedback.
Oh, yeah.
So then you would change some of the writing in number two. It would be cutting number one. We're still on the bottom of K. K one. Which I'm.
K one.
You're right. So then when you remove to two, which is the next page, which is it'll. You would need to.
Did you say the restrictions above?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're not limiting. Their speech, we're allowing them to bring posters. We just need to. Be careful because sometimes they're blocking the camera. And people are not, is that a concern?
Or the view of other people.
View of what the people.
Obstructing.
And disrupting the business.
Yeah.
That's.
Will we be fair on this to do if that's the thing? That we're holding people accountable for?
Oh, yeah.
Person. No, I think we would, anybody who violated a policy, we would pick. Because it's a limited public forum. It's not a public meeting.
Yes.
All right, anything else I can think of? Just. And clearly, this has been an issue for us on Jay, but so that people understand the intent is we've got that. So that our community understands that the intent of wrong practice. In no longer restricting. Comments about employees, we have a choice to not allow any employee comments whatsoever. That includes the good with the bad. We can't talk about Mrs. Bug is doing a terrific job with the kindergarten events. And we can't say Mrs. Bug is a terrible person. That's one option. Four. We will have absolutely no restrictions, good, bad, indifferent, whatever it's going to be. So the board needs to understand there are two different ways to go with this. And we didn't list that as an option A or B, Rob, but it is actually an option A or B. And would like us all to understand what that means and what do we think about it all.
I don't want to live it. I think if they have to say they should say it and if that's something to say. Or we add depending depending upon who. What, no, what they're saying or who they're speaking about. I guess. I'm fine with.
About limiting. About speaking employees or.
Is there anywhere in here that we haven't gotten to yet where, yes, you can speak, but what they talked about is conference with what? The language.
It's seen. That's done at the bottom.
Okay.
When you talk about with the presiding officer is able to. Able to do so.
Or, yeah, whatever. Okay.
In my opinion. I think the definition of what is good or bad. Subjective to whoever is, whoever is feeling whether it's cool or bad. And that is why we should put into consideration that aspect. Because who determines what is good or telling what's bad?
So are you saying unlimited or are you saying a lot of no comments about employees?
Employees. Like, if, um. This is for the participants. You know, you don't give. You don't give feedback. Your employee in a public place. In my experience in corporate. You can even be fired yourself given. Uh, open a feedback for employees in a session. So let's put into that consideration. If it is a board. I I'm okay if anybody comes there and says, Isaac. You didn't do right because I I'm elected by them. I am the employee. But for employees that work for them, the feedback should come in in a different form than in a.
I don't believe that's what.
Need a chance to speak and Mr.
When I'm done. So that is how I agree. So as we take care of this. We should put that in consideration. I'm gonna go either. If we fail, it's okay. But the problem I know is that we're setting a precedent for other people from other other employees that we may hire in the future. They may look at us, that's the best. If I go there, this is how I'm going to give my feedback. So which might impede opportunity of getting the best out of the best. I'm just thinking.
So if I'm understanding correctly, you would say no employee comments.
Yeah, if you have comment for employee, we have a channel. Yeah, we have a group of that. Let's have a channel. How deliver that to the employee than in a public forum.
Mrs. Schaefer, Mrs. Castle.
Um, I I struggle with this one is the way to go, like I. I, the reason we've had that wording there is because when there is not. People are not able to defend themselves. And so what is stated at the mic stands without being able to be corrected. And we haven't felt that that was. An appropriate way to treat our staff. So I have great concern if we take that away. And Johnny came home because he's mad that he didn't do well in a test and I come to the mic and I slam Johnny's teacher only to find out. It was really Johnny who screwed up, not the teacher, and now that's out there. Um, but I also hate the inability to be able to. Say like we did at a prior meeting. Mrs. Bug has done so much good for so many kids. But I think weighing those two. At a time where it's challenging to attract and retain top talent. I think that is what weighs the scale for me. And I would rather err on the side of making sure we're able to recruit and retain the best talent. Because we're partnering with our staff and not allowing misnomers to be perpetuated as truth potentially. Um, and we have other avenues. We have an entire policy on how to advance complaints. Um, and I, again, I think it's unfortunate we won't be able to advance the good, but I think that's the reality and we'll have to have people use other vehicles. In order to communicate that positive feedback, um, I think is where I stand ultimately.
So you would have no employee comments.
Mr. Wollman. Have we run this by legal?
And we've been done. By legal, just to make sure. And it has had preliminary. Check with it, but all of it will be run by me.
You may.
Okay, oh, you begin with us.
Sure.
This is how we got the situation in the part anyway. So we're trying to make sure. We don't get into that situation again. And that's why we're in the policy. So to answer your question, I think. The ruling says that there was opening.
But there was no rule.
There was no, oh, oh, there was, okay, they did, um, they did, um. The settlement, that was where the 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 issue is that it's too vague. They have to be finding. And that is what we're trying to do.
Sadly, I I agree that we now don't get to hear the good because people can't. Speaking from being a three ring circus. I'm tired of our meetings being a three ring circus because people have opinions. And it's sad to me and I I don't. It's been like this for two to three years. I mean, it it says in policy that you can't intimidate or. The amount of times that I have been intimidated last year when I sat in that seat and called names and. We had a policy that you're not supposed to. I I mean, it just it's frustrating because we are basically volunteers. Doing a job to try to educate kids. In the last two years, we haven't been able to do that. Because we can't keep people from. Some people don't have any decorum, no. I don't know. I I I don't agree. I'm saddened that we can't have. Nice things said about teachers and employees because. People feel like at this point, it's you can say whatever you want, whether it's true or not to anybody. This is this is not specific. To this year, this anything. It's been like this for two and a half, three years. I I would like to. I want to make sure legally it stands up though. Because I'm tired of being in court spending district money on settlements, which is what we're currently doing.
So no employee comment.
No.
But I'm what I'm hearing from the majority of the board. I'm going to speak. That's okay.
But may I speak after you, Ethan?
Sure, thank you. You know, we are all. Frustrated with the situation. It has been, I I will say from a material position and. Three of us sat in the role before. It has been very tough this year. And it's been tough in previous years. There are always conflicts. There are always issues that arise. But this year has been tougher than than normal. It is very hard to hear. The kind of comments that we've heard and know that we have kids in the audience. And know that we are role models for our students and that is always first and foremost to my head. I will say that I disagree. That board member comments and employee comments, they're not the same. As elected officials, I think we're held to a different standard. And I. I would not, no matter which side we went with this, say that it was, we should put restrictions on that. The community, although I wish they would be civil in what they say. Um, I would not restrict the right to say what they want to say. And frankly, that reflects more on the person speaking than it does on anyone else. In terms of our employees, I think that you've, um. Mr. D, you you cited some things that are absolutely relevant. We talk about retention and attraction. And I worry about the same things. I will tell you, I'll I'll respect the majority of the board. But from a personal perspective, I do lean more toward the not limiting. To being able to hear the good and the bad. And that is not what I've heard from the majority. And I appreciate that. We'll respect it, but. I still have to lean toward the First Amendment. And I would hope that we get back to a point of civility and respect at some point. It's tough when we're not asked very tough. So Mrs. Bodie, um, whatever you wanted to say, then we're going to move on from this.
Isaac, I I appreciate the point that you brought up, but I I feel that it. I also see it from the other point where people are. Not necessarily talking about their employee, but they're talking about employees at the school. So they should be allowed, if they've handled the complaint. In a professional manner and it still has not been confronted, they should be able to come to the mic. And complain about an employee and that is their right. And it's not that they're speaking about their employee. As you as you put forth, like, like a teacher come or a uh. A principal coming to speak about their employees, more so the community talking about employees at the school district is the way that I read it. But that is, that was another way to to, uh, I guess, look at that. But I I don't see that happening that way, I believe. Um, also, I also feel that it's bad that stifling the public comment. Um, because we can't handle uh the feedback. Is ridiculous, so much so that you're willing to stifle the. Cost of feedback that teachers are getting because you can't handle the tough conversations.
I don't believe anybody said we can't handle the tough conversations.
I believe I was going to move aside with everybody a quick response if you'd like to, and then we are going to move on, okay?
I just think that's a misnomer. I I I. We're talking about protecting students who are in the audience hearing things they shouldn't be hearing. It has nothing to do with handling it. And to Linda's point about, um. I understand that I'm an elected official and I have thick skin. I'm just saying, you can say whatever you want about me. But you can also say it. In a decorum manner. Bless America. Superintendent. Darby, Darby, stop.
You're out of order. Kelly, do you have any?
No, because I have nothing else to say because I'll just be.
Julie. Um, I have a point of clarification on two things. Um, first, are. Anyone who would like to make a complaint against staff members, we still have a policy. That reflects how we. Channel that and that ultimately does come to the board once they have gone through the appropriate chain of commands. Am I correct?
Yes.
And then if we. Don't allow comment, good or bad regarding a specific staff member, would people still have the opportunity to potentially say? I've been very pleased with the link program that my child has gone through, or does that restrict the ability to even do that?
We certainly have other avenues, emails to the board, um, other avenues that we can use to to.
To posit.
Even if it's not. Spotlight or staff spotlight. It's this is specifically, as I understand it, during public comment.
Thank you.
Does that answer?
Yes, thank you.
And maybe that can give clarification with your turn these two. I would think that it's just this. Moment in time.
I want to make something. Um, I know right now, what we're talking about has to do with situations that. Everybody has their opinion on. This, I wanted to go and record. This school district does not end. Next year, two years to come, three years to come. We're talking about setting a standard. That will protect this school district in the future. I. Have, I don't want to go into some things in the past, but. Tomorrow, two years, three years, four years, future, you're going to be out there looking for. People to come. And manage this school district, teachers, principals, whatever. The standard we're saying right now. It's going to harm us. Let's set a standard, employees, good or bad, go through, there's a process, the board, they will go through the process. Anybody can stand on that podium and say anything they like about me. I put myself there. I say I want I want to be on a board. Say whatever you like, play whatever you like, say anything about me, I'm fine. I'm your star. You you elected me. But let's make sure, good or bad, nobody should misunderstand my statement. Let's make sure our employees, there's a process in manage, just like you said, managing our employees, good or bad. If you're not happy about the ways money, go back to the board, view the board, but keep your employees protected. In the future, you're going to need it. I want that to go on record.
Thank you. We're going to move on. Um, Mr. Goldman will be. Adjusting to and creating unnecessary.
Yeah, we wanted to.
The portions of the meeting, the portion of the meeting, which, just based on the public is limited by shutting them to thirty minutes. We're having one, is that correct?
That's the very first. So I'm gonna postpone the answer to that, okay, alright, got it. Alright, we were on L, option A or B, it should be pretty simple.
It, and this is kind of like. And talk to legal power, okay, so what, what can we do, since, once again, it is a limited. Public forum, it's not open, you can, it's law supported that you can say. What, as you guys are talking about, what do we want to hear? What are we not comfortable with, and so you can put those parameters out there, so, um. Option A is just saying that you're just gonna do agenda items. You can only speak to whatever's on the agenda for that day, option B is, here's the other topics you can talk about, if you want to talk about one of these topics. And I just threw those down as example, not saying this is the. Be all and all, this is just an example of, I think, kind of what you guys are getting about, you know, if we let. Positive and negative comments come in. Then what are we okay with? And so this is just a, let's get, it's just a starting point, this isn't what I'm saying you have to do, just a suggestion, this is similar to kind of. What Sticamore has in theirs, and then I just took some things that we have in our loco to listen. As far as topics that you can pick to comment on and, and it goes directly to that person, so. That's just why those are there, not because.
Let me ask the board, I'll, I'll start with, I believe option A is, is a little broader and certainly gives us the opportunity to. Give our community a wider array of topics, so I would go with option A.
That's interesting because I view option B as being broader, so I was gonna pick option B because I felt it was broader. So interesting.
So we're saying that either only agenda items or. This list on the bottom. So, I guess.
Are you thinking those together? Yeah, yeah.
And then I was like.
Don't want to be out of order.
I say neither, I think we're controlling what the public speaks about, you're limiting free speech and you're opening up litigation.
Thank you. Did you want to put forward a proposal decision?
Yes, I would like to suggest that we add these items as noted, plus agenda items, so that it's. Can cover both.
Yeah, I think it should just be one, I think it should be both of them.
How is this specific to? Agenda on on the, the, you know, right now, we have two public, we have two public comments. Are we gonna match them? Or are we saying what's equal to maintain what it is?
We're talking about one public comment section.
Okay, so which bit did you find?
So what we have now is the on anything or agenda, and those are both separate.
Gonna be.
This would be just one. So Isaac, where are you leaning towards, Julie has proposed putting A and B together?
Yes, I'm proposing that if you're speaking not on agenda. Whatever you want to say. If number one is open to everything that you want to say, whatever you want to say, right?
What is agenda?
On the agenda item, then on the second, no, it should be open, anybody should say whatever they. But we combined.
So you just delete that, so you would combine those?
Yes.
Okay. I can support that as well. Alright, does that give way direction?
I'm confused, he said anybody should be allowed to speak on what they want to say, but this limits speech. A, B limits speech.
It says, whatever you're gonna say is added in operations.
No.
Or is on the, on the school board?
No.
Or you want to put employee there?
This, no, this is limiting, this is saying these are the perimeters that you have to comment on. Where when you're saying speech, that would delete those two options, these are just added in, if we want to go back to the previous. Way, then you might even include these, just because it's here, doesn't mean you have to accept it, you can say no. You don't have to accept this, right, right?
You said, Mr. D, do you want to change what you were thinking or?
Yeah, I I want, I I don't want to put limit what the public are going to say in our meeting, so long as. The restriction is, are you facing the board, which is what I see here on the board? Or you're talking about whatever it is in the school. But do not, like, pick up. An employee or somebody, either you're saying good or bad, where we had that arrow, take it out. Whatever you want to say, it must always fall within this, if not, what is the school board, it's a business we're running. So are you gonna come and tell me about somebody's, uh, dog, you know, back, or what are you gonna tell me? Everything you're gonna say that is not covered is here. Anything that I want to say that is not covered here, then we're here for business. So what is I gonna bring?
So toward that point, are there any areas that you feel that fall within? Our area of, of business that are not included there? It seems like a comprehensive list, Julie.
Um, we specifically spell out athletics, so because we specifically spell out athletics, I don't know if we. Other extra extracurricular student activities, yes.
As a broader area.
Yes.
Specifically either into. Your extracurricular and co-curricular?
Yes.
So why don't we say student extracurricular slash co-curricular activities?
Student activities.
Just want to be clear. Anything else that you feel needs to be?
And I think we can take away athletics because it would be the best.
Right, anything else? And then the. Last portion, Charles.
At the the very last sentence, then, instead of saying portions, because I heard that. No one does two of them, so if we want to go to one, we just remove the S and say the portion instead of portions.
Alright, any other questions or comments on this policy, like I said, sausage making.
Where do we? Do we deter, where do we determine where we put, but is it in here, if I missed it again?
I think that'll be just an agenda decision.
Yeah, it's not a policy where you hold it, just if you look at. I even looked at, uh, the Westchester and Liberty Township, I think they hold their public comment at the beginning. Okay, you got the beginning and then you go, go do business.
Right, that's a fair, there's a couple of people I talked to, Thomas did that too.
Yeah.
One of them did it right.
So you have one more policy still for, for Adam. Your third policy you ever bring forward, no. Okay, this is just a policy that's about self-funding truth, since we're self-insured, uh, puts in place, it kind of establishes. Who, um, is going to kind of protect the rights and all that stuff, so, this is. Putting at point of contact, which would be the executive director of human resources. Or the privacy official, it's kind of the gatekeeper, rule keeper, all of that stuff. They'll work through, we've all kind of been working to develop those, uh, guidelines, we just don't have, what we done yet, it's. This is a new one because we're not self-insured.
So we do not offer vision?
We, it's not our policy, we offer vision, the vision is a hundred percent employee election. This is just the ones that board provides. So, and then for the. Security of the technology, and all this is certified technology. Obviously makes sense that the executive director of technology be the overseer of that.
Any questions on thirty four nineteen point oh one?
And we do have food for everybody.
Okay.
And I don't know what people have in their schedules.
Let me ask, uh. We are definitely over scheduled, but I think that was a really important conversation for us to have. How many can stay past one o'clock? For diversity, I unfortunately have a hard stop at one today. Isaac, can you stay?
No.
And we want to have a forum at one o'clock. So we will need to postpone our diversity meeting.
Okay.
We're trying to reschedule that. And I thank everybody for the additional time, and for those who came out for diversity, I apologize and tried to reschedule that. I think this was an important discussion that the board had. So is there anything further? Or there is some lunch for you to take with you? Can we make a motion? And, Mr. Schaefer, when you need.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D, yes, Mr. D.
Yes.
You're injured.